This meeting of the City Eureka Springs City Council coming to order. Clark will establish your quorum, please.
Troy Sellar.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Carrie McClung.
Here.
Vicki Snyder.
Here.
Perky Pyle absent with notice.
All right, everybody place stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Brings us next to approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Mr. Mitchell.
Would it be possible to move up under new business code enforcement since Bobby Ray is here to, and rather than have him wait until the end?
Then move it up before number one? Just make it number one?
Yes, I'll second that.
Are you talking about number one, a new business or?
Or old business.
Unfinished.
Unfinished?
Yeah, unfinished business, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Snyder.
Under unfinished business, we'd like to remove number six until further notice.
I'll second that.
Mr. DeVita.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda, moratorium on all CUPs in R1.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, CUPs what?
CUPs in R1.
It's made and seconded, so we added number four into new business?
Correct.
That's okay.
Anybody else? All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Brings us to approval of the minutes for June the 24th, 2013.
Hope to approve.
Second.
If any changes, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to Commission Committee Authority Reports and Inspired Terms Planning. Ms. Beverly, you are here for.
Okay, just have a few things to tell you about. Tomorrow night, we have a public hearing at 6:00 for zoning variance. They would like a variance for the 200-foot rule to be waived at 8 Washington Street. On July the 23rd, we have a conditional use hearing for 23 Hillside. They already have four units and they want to add one more. And the rezoning of South Main from R1 to C1, that public hearing is going to be on August the 13th. We didn't, we had to put it in the paper 30 days' notice and so we didn't get it done until for August the 13th. I did want to let you know that on June the 11th, the Planning Commission voted to leave the Eureka Springs zoning code just as it was, especially concerning that C3. And then on the 28th of June, we held a public hearing about adding small entertainment to C3 zone. After hearing from the residents close to C3 zones, the Planning Commission felt very comfortable with our vote on 6/11 to leave the zoning code just as it was and to recommend to council to leave the Eureka Springs zoning code as it is written. That's it.
Thank you. Unless there's somebody out there from any of the following, there'll be no reports. CAPC, hospital, parks, HDC, cemetery. Probably none. Brings us to public comments and we have, thank you, Ms. Diana, and welcome back. Bob Jazinski.
Well, I'm gonna start where I left off last time, at number five. Last time I was up here, I spoke about the existing ordinance 140809D, which provides for a minimum penalty of $50 for each zoning code violation. In other words, any Chapter 14 violation, there is a provision in there for a minimum fine of $50, and it also says for each day of continuing violation shall be a separate violation. Now, the problem is with this 2184 ordinance, which you voted on twice already, is that it says that there shall be, the punishment shall be a misdemeanor. In other words, there was no reason to put a punishment clause in here because it's already covered in the code. But here's where the problem lies. You put a provision in there for punishment that says it's a misdemeanor and shall be punishable by a fine up to $500. So what do we have here? We have a conflict. Well, 2184 takes care of the conflict. It says that any ordinance conflicting therewith shall be repealed. So what you're doing, if you vote this ordinance in tonight, 2184, you are repealing the minimum penalty for zoning law violations of $50 a day. There shouldn't have been a penalty provision in here, and there shouldn't have been a repealer provision added to this order. Repealer provisions are not necessary. Most people don't put them in there because for exactly this reason, the trouble they can cause. The other point I wanted to make and compare this with what other cities have done that have given this also almost as much thought as you have, and much more attention, I believe, than some of you have. And when they passed an ordinance in most cities, they were able to agree on 30 days with a lot back and forth, making it illegal to rent to transients for less than 30 days. This ordinance here doesn't limit it to transients, it makes it illegal for anyone to rent to anyone for a period of less than 31 days. So my question to you is, and I can't figure it out, are you making week-to-week rentals to non-transients illegal? Here's to me that you are. And if you're gonna add anyone onto this list here, I don't know, I haven't seen a list, but remember, we've said it ad nauseam, and I pointed out the law to you, and it's been repeated by other members of this council here, that you cannot grandfather in an illegal use. And these people with this week-to-week lease baloney, you know, should never have been given, you know, the time of day. They tried this in Sedona. They weren't, they didn't think anyone would be dumb enough to buy the weekly rental lease deal. And what they did there to try and get around their law was, they said, no, this isn't a weekly rental, a monthly rental, this is an option to purchase. And the court was able to see right through that. But here in Eureka, you can just come up with a piece of paper that says week-to-week rental? That doesn't make it legal. So that's all I have to say. Hopefully you'll think it over before you do anything. Thank you.
That'll do it for public comments. Was this on unfinished business? We moved number three under new business up to number one, above schedule, so.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
You ready? Come on up to the mic. Floor is open. Yes, sir.
I had asked this to be added to the agenda long before we ended up with SWEPCO signed gate, and which is over now, so Bobby Ray is, that's not the discussion. I'd like to clear that up right quick. The discussion about code enforcement was one of five elements that I have thought a lot about in regards to the appearance of the city, the downtown area, with one being public works, code enforcement, businesses, residents, and then civic groups. And I know that Glenn and I are working on that demolition by neglect and cleaning it up, and I know we've had input from Bobby Ray about code enforcement and some of the problems he encounters with trying to get compliance, and the fact that it takes years in some of these structures to accomplish anything. And it takes a lot of his time and sheer will of calling people, trying to get them to clean up their lawns, mow the grass, et cetera, et cetera. And a lot of that comes from the fact that our ordinances do not really have a section in them that I think our attorneys mentioned in the past, if sometimes if you don't have penalties and things like that to go along with it, it, there's just no, there's no teeth in our ordinances. So the issue of code enforcement, again, is one element of five, and one of two, of which the city has control and can help. And that was part of the reason for here, but I know Mr. Bobby Ray has some news or something for us.
Well, I just wanted to give everyone an update on the North Main property. I have spoke with one of the family members. The original landowner has passed, and the family is having a meeting Tuesday afternoon to decide whether to rebuild or fix it, or actually do demolition. They're kinda swaying toward the fixing it up, but once they get inside there, I think they're gonna see it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot cheaper for them, for the demolition. I have, kinda on the same subject as Mr. Jazinski stated, like with the fines, I didn't know if y'all were aware, I have talked to Morris and Earl about getting ahold of our judges, because they set the fines on city ordinance stuff that we enforce through the city police department as far as careless and imprudent driving or whatever. And I am in the process of trying to set up a meeting with the judge and see if he will concur on a lot of these city ordinances, instead of having from up to $500, that it's a set fine. And then you have it for your first offense, your second offense is even higher or doubled. And I just didn't know if y'all were aware of that. That, that will help me out a lot, because a lot of people right now see that and say, oh, am I gonna get a $25 fine, or, you know, this is no big deal. I think this will put some teeth into it, and it should help.
Bobby, you and I have talked several times in regards to enforcement and/or lack thereof. And would you explain to the people what you were finally able to explain to me this last week in regards to the new computer system we're getting and how that's gonna help you?
Yes. The finance department had gotten approval from y'all to get a new system, web system. As we have looked through that, it will also integrate the building department into the same system. Kind of does away with a paper trail, per se. But it also allows the homeowner, the homeowner can go to the city website, or to this website, and pull up their address and see if there's been permits issued, you know, if they have a contractor that said, yeah, I went and pulled the permit already, they can go to this website and pull it up, pull up just their address, and it'll say whether a permit's been issued. It allows officers that are on patrol, if there's people doing work on the weekend and the permit's not posted, they can have dispatch log right in, and it tells them where the permits, it does yard sales, it does, well, essentially almost everything that's paid for down here, whether your water bill's been paid and all that. This is really going to help out a lot. It'll have a tracking system instead of the paper trail like now, when we write out a letter, certified letter, and send it out, I have to make two copies, one to them and one for the property file. The way I take it, this new system almost essentially does away with the paper part of the property file. And once it's logged in there, just when you type the address into the letter, it automatically sends one to that address inside the system.
And explain how this gives you more time for code enforcement?
It helps out a lot because I can, I like to meet with my contractors, I like to see them face-to-face. I know there was problems before when they had, where you could pull permits online. The nice thing about this, it also red flags, if somebody does pull one online, say, I'm not here, and they pull it online, and it comes up, it automatically red flags the girl down at the front desk and says, had they have a current license, they have a current surety bond, you know, HDC approval or planning and zoning review, it automatically red flags it whether it hasn't been done.
Thank you. And thanks for coming in on your vacation.
No problem.
Is that Mr. DeVita?
Well, I could testify to Bobby enforcing code because we had a little visit this weekend, because I totally spaced, I went to the HDC, got the approval, and somehow just walked right past and never got my permit, and so as far as patriotism, I don't think it's happening here, because he came down and pointed out that I didn't have a permit, and so he is paying attention without a doubt.
Anything else, Mr. Ray? Thank you, Bob, appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Okay.
Now go have fun.
Moves us on to number one, and rigor to number one, the scheduled town meeting date, discussion of that. Mr. DeVita.
We met with Mr. Perky Pyle, Mr. Mitchell, myself, and the press, set up a format for the town hall meeting. We'll get it into a precise sheet for everybody to hand out. Basically, just touching on it, it would be the mayor, the city council, the commission chairs, and the department heads, and we would have a little over, around an hour or so for all of those people to give an update in what they'd like to see happen, and then we'll reserve about an hour to an hour and a half for public comment. So we'll get all this together in a concise manner and then submit it to council for their approval.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mitchell, would you second the motion to discuss that?
Yes, yes.
For paperwork.
Yes.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
And this is still on August 19, right?
Still on August 19, correct.
Moves this past number two, which is postponed, to number three, third reading ordinance 2184, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. DeVita.
I've moved to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2184 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
I guess we'll have to roll call that one, since it is third reading.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Sellar.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
For one.
For one. Mr. DeVita.
I'm assuming everybody's received the list of the five properties?
You should have copies of it, yes.
Yes, I got mine.
Amendment D, I believe.
Go ahead and read it.
Yes, X was changed to D because the, what's in the code was reviewed and D was the next in line. So in Section 3, the fourth line would say Appendix D. And addresses, there are five of them, 23 Fairmont, 18 Hale, 18 Nut, and two Singleton addresses, Ein Singleton and Kent.
Yes, sir.
Is this our time to discuss this? I mean, I do want to discuss this, but really it's, we need to.
I think it's the next one after you.
Read the ordinance title and then we can do it, then, right?
We can discuss it. Okay, we jumped over discussion, Mr. DeVita.
She needs to read the title, and then you can have a discussion about.
Ordinance 2184, an ordinance prohibiting weekly rentals of property located within any residential zone.
Okay, now, that was on the, suspend the rules. We haven't verified it on third reading yet.
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now we make the motion to approve on this third reading, and then we discuss. Is that not correct?
No.
Yeah.
We discuss first and then approve it, don't we?
No.
Well, no, because we suspend the rules and read them by title only.
Right.
So now the second question would be for, approve on the third reading.
Correct.
A motion to, a motion to approve ordinance number 2184 on the third and final reading.
Second.
And now discussion. Ms. Snyder.
Okay, as usual, I'm gonna do it again. I want to know why we are targeting one certain type of lodging over all of the other ones. I have yet to get a responsible answer, or a coherent answer, or an answer that makes any sense whatsoever. I don't care if it's restricted from R1 and allowed in R2 or 3, as long as it's not done away with. That's discriminatory and unfair, and there are a lot of people and a lot of families that need a week here with a kitchen rather than taking their 5 billion kids out to eat. Everybody's screaming and hollering and moaning and everything else about not having enough money coming in and not enough tax money, and you're doing away with one whole huge monetary faction by taking away weeks. Families with kids cannot afford a week here in restaurants three times a day. They need a kitchen. You're talking a pile of money that you're saying, we don't care. So I will continue to be against this, I don't care if y'all care, pass it or not, I will be against it and doing everything we can to make it fair. Now, if you want to restrict it in R1, that's understandable, it's got a lot of restrictions there. People who are renting out a secondary little building for a week to families are not kicking their families out to do this. So this doesn't make sense either, saying this is ruining our neighborhoods. Obviously, the little piece of property is available. Some people would like to do this kind of thing, be it a week or a month, simply so they can be paying for their property until they get a chance to finally move here. You're not allowing that to happen. Like I said, this thing is discriminatory from start to finish in so many ways, it's unbelievable. That being said, I would like to ask the attorney, did you have a clarification or change or whatever you call it that needed to be made in regards to the 31 days?
I think the language could read 30, it's not required to.
Well, explain what we talked about.
I originally had put 30 in there.
Right.
And I think 30 is sufficient to prevent what the council's been talking about. And it got changed at the table to 31, and I'm not sure that there was a real good reason why it was changed, but.
Mr. DeVita.
Question for the city attorney. The points raised by Mr. Jazinski on the penalty phase of that, is, do you see any problems?
I do see that, what he says, as far as this particular ordinance, there will be no statutory minimum, but it will not remove the statutory minimum for the remainder of the code. Those are each set individually. But if you look at the argument that he's making, that a judge could say, well, the penalty is zero or $1, the judge can always impose a fine and then suspend it if he wants to anyway. So honestly, under the code, the $50 minimum that he was talking about, a judge could always impose that and then suspend the whole thing anyway, and you would end up with the same dollar amount of potential fine. So honestly, I don't see that it's a major point.
I would move to amend ordinance number 2184 regarding the 31 days and change it to 30 days.
Second.
Just have to call for roll call, though. Maybe just a worst warning on this, since he's not being ordered. Getting the ordinance suspended itself is just an amendment with the ordinance. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, sir.
Okay, on this Appendix D, the, oh, it's already been cleaned up. I didn't even look at this now, this is the new one. Okay, I'm happy.
Any further on this one? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have another question, are we, am I interrupting?
We're still in the discussion.
Yeah, okay. I was under the impression when we started this that what we were trying to do was prevent short-term rentals within an R1, which in our zoning laws is called R1 Victorian Residential. This ordinance deals with R1, R2, and R3, as it reads here. Are we saying that you can't rent for less than 30 days in R1, R2, and R3? And are then we negating the whole bed and breakfast industry from the residential area? Because we allow bed and breakfast in R1 and R2, and apparently R3, and generally bed and breakfast rent for a weekend. So are we saying that anybody who's in a residential area and has a bed and breakfast can't rent for anybody for less than 30 days? That's the way I'm reading this.
No. If you look at the, I believe it's paragraph 2.
No.
That would allow that the existing uses within those districts to continue, whether they're by CUP or whether they're by right under the zoning that is currently in place. This is preventing rental that would be outside those already granted specific rights.
In other words, if I have a bed and breakfast operating in an R2 area, and we pass this ordinance, I can ignore it, I can still go ahead and rent for weekends?
It does not apply to you.
Because I'm already in business?
Because you're already legally under operation of the code.
Okay, so this only appeals to people who are starting up a bed and breakfast in a residential area.
You already have to follow the various rules to get a bed and breakfast. Particularly, you can't get one in R1 at this point.
Well, yeah, but it isn't clear to me whether I can operate in R2 and R3 from this ordinance. If I want to start a bed and breakfast now, this ordinance doesn't make it clear. It's legal nonconforming uses existing on the effective date of this ordinance, colon, illegally operating rental businesses in dwelling units R1, R2, and R3 for 30 days less in uses and et cetera. Okay. I'm not sure my question is answered here. In other words, we are not interfering with business as it goes on in Eureka Springs in the bed and breakfast industry, except that we are telling them that in R1, they cannot rent for less than 30 days. Does that restate what this ordinance does?
It is preventing you from, I think that's a fair reading.
Okay, now, what about the thing that was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting that if you rent from a bed and breakfast and you are a transient, you automatically become a resident the minute you sign any kind of an agreement to rent? That was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting, so as a way around this, just to make anybody who wants to rent your property to sign a rental agreement, and then they're a resident, and now it doesn't apply to them, they can rent for a week if they want to, or two weeks?
No, the purpose of this ordinance would be to say that whether they're a resident or not, they can't rent during that 30 days.
Okay, but it doesn't.
It is not defining who, whether they're resident or transient.
Well, don't you think we should have this in the whereas part, because the meat of an ordinance is the whereas, because it demonstrates what the intent of the law was? And what we're trying to do is prevent people from work renting by the week and then changing off and having a new tenant the next week. So don't we need to say this in the whereas part to make it very clear what we intend?
Actually, the whereas is a legislative tool used by the court to interpret things, but it's not the meat of the law. The meat of the law is the subsections. The subsections define what the law is, and if the court is unable to interpret something, then. they can look at either the meeting minutes, or in our case, they have in the past looked at the actual recordings of the council meetings to get the intent of what the council was looking at. They do the same thing with the state legislature if they're trying to interpret a state law. They'll look at the minutes on older laws, and now that most of them are recorded, they will look at the recordings.
Okay. Well, I'm just, um, I'm not arguing with you or trying to sound like I know what I'm talking about here, because I probably don't. However, my point of view is in the head of the person who is absolutely determined to get around this law and do what they want to do regardless of what the ordinance says, and I'm just looking for, uh, a way they can find to just simply go ahead and do their weekly rentals regardless. And this isn't about what the tourists want, uh, and this comes up a lot. Well, the tourists don't like this, the tourists don't want this. What we're trying to do in these R1 neighborhoods is preserve them for the people who live there. We, the city council is the court of last resort for these people who live there. They have no one else to turn to when their neighborhood starts to deteriorate, and we're trying to prevent this constant turnover of residents in these houses here, and we're trying to limit this. And I'm just not convinced that we say enough, that we have enough words in this ordinance to make that really clear to somebody who is absolutely bound and determined, comes in from out of town, is going to show the local locals how to go around the local law. That's what I'm saying. Okay, I'm done.
You're next, Mr. Snyder.
So what this thing is saying, and I'm looking at the attorney, what this thing is saying in Section 1, that henceforth it shall be a misdemeanor to rent property as a dwelling within any residential zone within the city of Eureka Springs, and goes on with the fine, yada, yada, for a period of 30 days or less. Section 2, that this ordinance shall not amend the conditional uses permitted in R1, 2, and 3. So is this saying, then, in effect, uh, it's not just weeklies, it's B&Bs, anything else? If you are not established as of today, does that mean because of this, if this gets passed, nobody can do anything less than a month?
That was my question.
No.
That's what it says.
No, I don't believe that's what it says.
It says it will not amend...
You're arguing with an attorney.
Uh-huh, on an equal basis. It will not amend the conditional uses permitted.
It's not changing them from what they are now under the current code.
Okay, so what you're saying is, if in R2 or 3, it says if your neighbors agree, you can do a B&B, that's still being permitted?
Still being permitted.
Okay. So why are we restricting it to weeklies? If they can do a B&B, why can't they do a weekly? Throwing it right back at you guys. It's discrimination.
Joyce, maybe I can help you out just a little bit.
Arkansas law, the landlord-tenant is what prompted all of this, that people were saying that they were in effect establishing landlord-tenant relationship even though they were transient guests. And the difficulty lie, lay in the enforcement, because when you're renting for under a week, it's kind of, well, you know, a lot of tourists want to do, oh, four, five days. Well, you could stretch four or five days, call it a week, and people thought that they were getting away with the way the law was written about weekly rentals. But the abiding thing here is transient versus non-transient. So in an effort to make this easier to enforce, we're going to 30 days. And now, this is still in relationship to the landlord-tenant relationship. This does not affect the CUP process for B&Bs. People will still be able to go through the entire process, which is a lengthy process of a public hearing, notifying all your neighbors, and potentially, you could still get a B&B. So this speaks to the difficulty we were having with people who felt like they were renting on a weekly basis. The only issue was, they were renting to tourists, which was in violation of our law. So there's really no Eureka law. We're functioning under the state law of the landlord-tenant relationship, and that's what was being violated. So in order to make that easier for code enforcement, we moved it up to 30 days. We've not eliminated weekly rentals in Eureka Springs. There's still plenty of weekly rentals in C1 and other various locations, so... And, and you can rent a B&B for a week, or a month, or however long you want, or stay in a hotel for however long you want. This was dealing with the, the herd of people that were rushing to take advantage of what they thought was a loophole, which in reality was not a loophole. It was a violation of our laws, and this is an effort to make this more enforceable. We're not eliminating weekly rentals. Don't get that wrong. There will still be weekly rentals in Eureka Springs. There will still be the potential for B&Bs when you go through the process of applying for a B&B. I'm happy to report that we were looking at more than a dozen properties, and it's been pared down to five through the actions of, of the, the planning commission and reviewing all of that and determining whether it was truly a landlord-tenant relationship. So we've weeded out a number of people who were kind of skirting the law, and I think this will go a long way to ensuring the integrity of our neighborhoods.
Mr. McClung, you're next, and then Mr. Mitchell, you'd be next.
Well, uh, all I was going to say, in addition to that, is that, that you're always going to have those that are going to try and cheat the system. And, and they, and they, uh, you know, if they can, if they can rent their place without even buying the licenses or that, they're cheap looking to try and do that. We may catch them, we may not, but, you know, that's just, that's just part of the deal.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell.
I agree with most everything Alderman DeVito said, except we never issued a citation to anybody to know whether they were legal or not legal. We asked our attorney to help us with the situation, and he brought back the same ordinance that was looked at back in '02 and brought it back to us, and we have it before us now, and it is wrapped up. And Alderman DeVito's right, we've got pared it down to five properties. And, and considering where it was and where we're at, this is a, a good way to wrap and close that process.
Mr. Snyder.
Pretty it up as much as you want by restricting weeklies, except for in the Cs, C1, 2, 3, whatever. You are discriminating, and you're cutting out a faction of people that it's not fair to do. Give it its own requirements, its own CUP. Restrict it from R1, that's fine. Everything else is restricted. Stick it in R2 and 3 if they want. You're not hurting the neighborhoods. And I take great umbrage at calling people who know how to read the law and use it to their own benefit cheaters. That is not cool, and it's been said several times by several people. Just because you know how to use the law doesn't mean that you're cheating, because you find a loophole that some city government eons ago didn't make clear.
Can we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve on third reading?
I don't know that we do.
As amended?
I think we did.
We approved the amendment.
Okay.
So it'd go to the initial motion?
I think we did the motion to approve on the third, then we had discussion, and a second and then discussion, so now I think we're to the vote.
Correct.
Did you?
You are correct.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Call action.
Oh, real call, okay. Okay.
We're reading with amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
You get it.
Here we go. Ms. Eller.
What are we voting on now?
They're proving on 30.
Okay, yes. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Of course not.
No. For one.
Missus Sunden, number four, ordinance for commercial recycling glass cardboard. Motion to discuss.
I'd table this, since we don't have an ordinance in place. Table it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
We have to.
Okay. So it is pushed and pooped. And number five is postponed, am I correct?
They've had the public hearing, though.
Not on this.
So it really...
Not on this.
Have you had the public hearing on that one? Okay. So it is... Okay, you want to address what went on at the planning meeting?
Motion to discuss.
Say it.
Somehow, um, this one and the next one kind of got pushed together at your table. 80 Mountain Street, I gave you, um, this information several times before. It's listed on your code book on page 400 as, um, a permitted use within R1, and that it's a building used for religious services. 80 Mountain Street has been C3 since 2006, and it's no longer used for religious services. So we did want that to be, um, removed, but you would have to send it to the city attorney for an ordinance to be, um, drawn up. When we brought this, you asked that we look at things about C3, if it could fit into C3, and that's what the public hearing was about, and we did have that public hearing.
Mr. Mitchell.
So, at this point, we're just clearing that building up because it's nonreligious. We're not over in what goes on in C3 or any of the other stuff, because that's still over at planning. Well, actually, you voted no to small entertainment, but it, it is my understanding that this week, Elise Rennick is having a meeting with the neighbors that are impacted by that building, and it's taking place Thursday. And, and one of the neighbors that was most impacted is coordinating that with the neighbors to meet with her, and, and so it's, it probably behooves, that's why we took, asked to take the C3 discussion off, because it would be premature for, for, really for council to have any discussion about C3 or what's going on, because we ought to allow the neighbors to meet with Ms. Rennick on that. So right now, you're just asking us to take that building off of, of the religious list, period? Okay.
Right, there's a list in R1 for buildings used for religious services. That, that 80 Mountain Street is not in R1, and it's not used for religious services.
Thank you.
So you would have to send that to your city attorney to get that done.
Okay.
Mr. McClung.
Does that not, can that just not be stricken because it's no longer pertinent? I mean, it's, the zoning's been changed, it's no longer R1, where it's permitted, and now it's C3, where, so...
It's just like our use of grandfathers. There's a, uh, everything has an appendix of grandfathered things, and we go over those once a year and look at them to see if anything's changed or anything's right, and this one was just brought to our attention this year.
Can't we just do that by a, a simple vote here at council and, and have it removed because it's no longer pertinent, or does it take an ordinance?
It will take an ordinance unless the ordinance that was passed approving the court settlement that changed it from R1 to the C category had a clause in it that allowed for repeal of all conflicts. If it had a repeal clause, it can be removed.
Did it, did we have an ordinance to do?
Yes, there was an ordinance that settled the court case.
I don't know that answer.
I would move to table this item until our next agenda, so we can find out if said ordinance exists.
It'd be number five.
Second.
Number five, correct.
Okay. Made in second, Mr. Mitchell, was it?
I'll second that, yes, sir.
All right. And we postpone number six, is that correct? Just making sure that we're all on the same page. Moves us to number seven, be third read of ordinance 2185.
Love to discuss.
Second.
Second.
Floor's open. This would be the third reading. Mr. DeVito.
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2185 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Be a real call.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five zero.
Mr. DeVito.
She has to read it first.
Okay. Thought you had it.
Ordinance removing, ordinance number 2185, ordinance removing front corner setback requirements in certain zoning districts.
Mr. DeVito.
I approve ordinance number 2185 on its third reading.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Five zero.
All right, thank you. Moves us to number eight, would be the ordinance setting rate for limo business licenses.
So moved?
Second.
Floor's open? Yes?
Um, nope, he has the ordinance again.
You have an ordinance that, uh, the clerk looked at a little while ago. You can pass them around. You can pass them around.
Do you have one of these?
Yes, sir. I went ahead and plugged in line item number 120 in section 1. And this will be ordinance 2186.
I'm sorry, what was that number?
2186.
Thank you.
Ordinance setting.
Do we have to vote to...
Oh, sorry.
To assign a number?
I'd move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Wait, wait, what happened to discussion?
So dyslexia's in high gear. Okay.
Was it five zero?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's been rough this last week. Madam Clerk, what is the title on ordinance 2181, that what was previously called, um, the taxi-limo ordinance? Do we keep that name, or did we change it?
This is not the time for discussion.
Yeah, it does pertain to discussion.
This is the time for discussion.
We didn't observe it yet. The vote was to assign a number and place it on its first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, no, I'm messing, my bad. All right. So we're going to read it first and then discuss. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to hit myself here.
Ordinance number 2186, an ordinance setting business license fee for limousine businesses. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current license fees set out in 4.36 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, and whereas the city clerk has recommended revisions thereto, and whereas it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the code, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, line item separation, that the fee schedule in subsection 4.36.04 is hereby amended by separating current line item 115 into two separate line items as follows: line item 115 for the taxi service and line item 120 for the limousine service. Section 2, fee, the license fee for each line item separated hereby shall be $50. Section 3, severability clause, in the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision clause... In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section four, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVito.
Approve ordinance number 2186 on its first reading.
Second.
Discussion.
Now we can discuss. Mr. Snyder.
Okay, so the taxi-limo title originally is, did we keep that on there when we did the 2181, you know, describing jumbo taxis and all that? It used to be called the taxi-limo ordinance.
I'm not understanding your question, I'm sorry.
Okay, is it, is it still, when we did the stuff on 2181 for the jumbo taxi and the limousine describing, this is still called the taxi-limo thing? There's always been discussion for years on when did limo get added into the taxi ordinance?
That's ancient history. You have accomplished cleaning that up.
That's what I'm saying, so is it any longer called taxi-limo ordinance?
That's history, it's done.
There's no name here, this is just it? I mean, that's the name of it now? I don't know how to put this right.
They're no longer co-joined, they are now separate entities. There is no taxi-limo.
Two separate entities.
Okay.
They are now separate.
Well, we just read then, well, okay, this is for the taxi cabs, 2181.
What is it that is being a problem? There's no, that doesn't say taxi-limo anywhere.
That's what I'm asking, do we have an ordinance on limos? And do we have an ordinance on taxis? Or are they the same thing with everything inclusive?
We have really covered this territory repeatedly. That separated the two. There is not a standalone ordinance regulating the two entities separately. There is not an entity defining taxis and everything, and there's not an entity defining limousines and everything that's involved in that. It's simply two separate business categories now, that's all.
To give a line on.
With two licenses. Okay.
I understand that there is, that there is a need on some people's part to nail down limousines and regulate them, but what is happening here today has nothing to do with that.
Okay, what I'm referring to, okay, so ordinance 2181. The taxi cabs, and it explains what a jumbo is, and the limousine being used or not used as a taxi, okay? Is this the only ordinance we have right now for taxis and limos? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Like I said, I didn't know how to put it. Okay, then my question is, since limousines can be used as taxis when used by the taxi company, and I'm going to have problems again. If you try to get two separate fees, line item fees for two items that are allowed by one company to be owned, is that not double taxation?
That's not what's happening.
By a minute, it would not be, but the way that your ordinances are written, the companies that have taxi certificates that allow them to operate, their limos are not limos, they're jumbo cabs. So they do not fall under the same requirement.
Okay, so...
Yes, you have often, a lot of businesses in town will have to have two separate licenses to operate, and that's allowable.
So if we have a taxi, let's say we have three taxi companies. Two of them have taxis and limos, but the limos are under the jumbo taxi cab thing.
So they pay a taxi.
So they pay one fee. But if we have someone who only has taxis, they pay the same fee, but if someone gets a limo, they pay that. But if they have both, but they're not using it as a jumbo, then they pay it twice?
They can't use it as a jumbo unless they have a taxi permit.
Okay, so when, okay, so then the only time that a limo license fee would be charged is if that's all that you have is a limo.
We have two companies right now that are allowed to operate taxis. Those two companies will need a taxi license under this, an 11, or a 115 license.
Okay.
The other companies in town that do not have the permits to use taxis will need the 120 permit.
Okay, so the people with both aren't being charged twice. Okay, that takes care of double taxation, thank you.
Mr. McClellan.
I have the question of, is that per unit, or is that just, that's just a general license?
The way this is written, it's just a general license. Now, a lot of cities would charge a lot more for this, but this is what the code, and this is what Madam Clerk, I think, had proposed to you last time with the $50.
DeVito.
Just to put it in perspective, Harrison doesn't even have business licenses. So they don't regulate, they don't charge anything for businesses. So, you know, our fees are not exorbitant, so, you know, I think it's fair.
Further? So now we'll need to...
Approve on the first reading.
Approve on the first reading. Need a motion to approve on the first reading.
That was the motion.
Okay, okay.
Now I'll vote.
We just need to vote, we'll get a second?
Terry.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Can you post? All right, it's a five zero. All right, move on to first reading. Moves us to number nine, be an update on the 0.58 acres of city lift station easement.
Motion to discuss.
Your second? Need a second to this.
Say it.
Oh, second, sorry.
I gave this to Mr. Allen to do some research on, and this is what he sent me. Said, Morse, I've taken Liberty, no, he didn't say Liberty. I look at the Liberty offer. I was correct, Rocky Whitley owns 30-plus acres, of whom we have non-exclusive 15-foot easement in place. It gives us access to our lines and station of property. Mr. Liberty has, is not located at our station, which is on the south end of the property. Hers is less than acre of the old treatment facility for the Ramada. We never have, we have never owned that and would never have wanted to own it. It would be a liability, and we should have, if we, I can't even read these right now. It would be a liability, and we would have to maintain the area. Our easement is enforceable if needed. Come on, if we have any questions. So our station is not on her property. And I checked with the assessor's office, and the original amount of the 20,000, or the 20,500 value is greatly diminished. And the assessor said it was probably worth around 2,000, and this is from her. So we can make up our mind if you want to buy it or not. So there it is. Yes, ma'am.
Is what he's saying is that we really don't have to buy it if we don't want to?
True.
That we have access to...
It's not, it's not part of our easement. It's totally in a separate...
Okay, so if we don't buy it, we won't ever get in any trouble or any problems with...
No, we have a, from Mr. Whitley, we have the 15-foot easement in place.
Okay, okay.
And it's enforceable from now on.
Okay, well, then...
So is there any reason why we would want or need this property?
That would be totally up to y'all.
No, that's not what I mean. Did the building inspect, or the...
No, he just said it would be a liability.
A lot, okay.
And we would have to maintain it.
Okay, so there's no need for us to actually...
I'm giving you the report, and apparently it's a moot point now, so we can move on.
Okay.
Unless I want to take any further action on it.
We want to vote on it?
Moving on. Thank you. The new business, number one, is discussion of the 200-foot rule in all residential zones. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Yes, sir.
I'd ask the planning chair to come to the microphone to discuss the request.
Yes, please.
I sent you a statement about this. On June the 11th, Eureka Springs Planning Commission met in regular session and voted five to nothing to recommend to council to extend the 200-foot rule to all residential zones. In 2001, when the original ordinance was passed, it was done to protect the neighborhoods from too much commercial influence. At that time, the majority of the problem was in R1, and that was the only zone addressed. Today, we've seen more commercial in our residential zones, and we believe it would help with this situation if we would go ahead and extend that 200-foot rule to all the residential zones. And what the 200-foot rule says is, you cannot, you will not be given a CUP if there's already something within 200 foot on that same street. So if there's a B&amp;B at one house, and you want to put a B&amp;B at the next house, you will not be given a CUP for that. So it's, it's trying to limit how much commercialism can come into the neighborhoods. We think it's a good idea, but it takes your approval and for you to send it to the city attorney to have that written up.
Mr. Mitchell.
It sounds great with all the discussion that's been going on and all the public input recently about the invasion into the residential areas, be it R1, R2, or R3. It makes total sense, and you had five-one vote in planning. Five-zero, five-zero, sorry. Five-zero to, to move it forward, thank you.
Mr. Snyder.
Do you clarify the neighbors within the 200-foot? Because this has been talked about before. The people within 200 feet have a right to say something versus...
That has nothing to do with what I'm asking you for.
That's what I wanted to clarify, because it keeps bouncing back and forth.
That has nothing to do with what I'm asking you for. What I'm asking you for, this 200-foot rule is about what businesses, what conditional use permits can be given. And it has to be on that, the street, the frontage streets, within 200 foot in any direction. And what it will do is just limit the amount of commercial businesses that will be allowed to go into the residential areas.
Thank you.
That doesn't mean that they can't get a variance for that. In fact, you've got one that's...
Have one tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, in an R1.
The Board of Zoning and Adjustment is, says that we have the authority to grant a variance to setbacks or to something if the, if they can, you know, prove that there is a really, really valid reason for that. And of course...
And that still doesn't, doesn't, they have all the other bells and, or hoops to jump through, you know, parking requirements and everything of that nature too. Any property does, if they, when they make a request for a CUP.
Correct.
Mr. DeVito.
I would make a motion to have the city attorney draw up ordinance extending the 200-foot rule to all residential zones.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, can you post? All right, moves us to number four. Moratorium on CUPs in R1 District. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Go ahead, Chuck.
Well, you know, this is just an extension of all we've been discussing of what's been going on in our residential zones. And it's my understanding that planning will be discussing eliminating CUPs from R1. And we saw what happened the last time planning went into discussion about regulating weekly rentals. There was a stampede to get, because word got out. And it's not going to be any different with this one either. You know, once I get that application in, we can't stop it. So I feel that it's in the best interest of the city that we pass a moratorium. I'm not going to say how many days, but I think it's imperative that we do something tonight, because otherwise there's going to be more encroachment in the residential zones. As council people, we need to look at the entire city. And that means our commercial zones. And anybody driving through our community has got to be aware of what's happening in our commercial zones. We've got so much property that is vacant in the commercial zone. And part of that is because of people encroaching into the residential areas. So don't just focus on the residential areas alone. Look at the city, look at the impact of everything that happens in a residential zone, and how it affects our commercial zones. Because every time you allow somebody to house somebody in a residential zone, that's a commercial zone that's not getting the potential of a client. And we've got hundreds and hundreds of motel rooms sitting vacant that if we can close some of these loopholes in our residential zones, that will encourage investment in our commercial zones, where they can do weekly rentals, where they can do nightly rentals, where they can, you know, have a multitude. But we've got to stop the hemorrhaging in our residential zone, and that's why I'm asking for a moratorium.
Mr. Mitchell.
I 100% agree with Alderman DeVito on this issue. And council has already learned, as he eloquently said, that the folly of not putting a moratorium on something and allowing it to, to progress, it would be a very safe move, can always be rescinded, but it would be a very safe move at this point to put a moratorium on all CUPs in R1. At this time, as we go through the discussion and of this process, it's just a safe move.
Mr. Snyder.
Okay, dyslexia or not, I'm thoroughly confused. I thought CUPs in R1 were already restricted, as in no more new. What am I thinking of?
Just tourist lodging in R1.
Oh, so...
B&amp;Bs were not restricted.
Okay, that was the difference.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean...
It's okay.
Okay, wait.
Not finished, huh?
So that, so what you're just saying is, well, let's hold off on any kind of CUP that is still allowed until we settle this. Okay. My other question or problem or whatever, I hate seeing people say, "You can't stay here, but you can stay up there." But I don't want to stay up there, I want to stay down here where it's cool. No, you got to stay up there. To me, when you start talking R123 versus C123, this is what we're doing. We've got to be able to come up with some kind of something, because not everybody wants to stay up on the freaking highway. And it's not fair or right to tell them, whether it's people wanting to do a business or people coming here to stay at a business, it is fair or right to say, "You have to build your B&amp;B up on the highway." No, you can't do it down here, we don't want you down here. I don't, I'm either missing something, or I'm just really sensitive, but it just seems really unfair to me to take that kind of attitude.
Mr. McClellan.
Is it, is, are we, is the planning commission, Beverly, wanting to do away with bed and breakfast in R1?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
We do have this on our agenda to speak to tomorrow night to find out, but I would like you to know that I do have a conditional use permit hearing on July the 23rd for 23 Hillside. It's already in the works, they've already paid their money, and they're set to do that. But I did, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot, because it is on our agenda, and we've been working on it. In 2009, we had 107 CUPs in R1, 2009, that is a lot. Today, we have 28 CUPs... Today, we have 28 CUPs in R1. So it is a lot less CUPs. I mean, there are some more grandfathered properties, plus those 28, plus the grandfathered properties, but it's not like it used to be. So we have taken the list down a lot, and I don't know what the outcome from the planning commission's going to be, because we just put it on our agenda last week to discuss it this week. But I just want you to know that I do have something already in the works for one of these. If y'all put, pass a moratorium, I don't exactly know what that does with this one.
Beverly, but isn't that... Sorry.
Mr. Snyder, I think you hit something.
Well, I was just going to say that sometimes this isn't about what the tourists want to do. This is about the people who thought they were moving to an old Victorian town and bought a house here, and suddenly the whole thing is falling down around them because everybody wants to have commercial property. Sometimes, if you're a tourist and you want to live there and it's against our law, I'm sorry, you can't do it. It's the same, I don't know, sometimes I feel like I'm, I think I've said this several times in about 1,000 conversations I've had this last week on this subject, that it's like when I was raising my teenagers, and the reason why I had to let them do something, regardless of whether it was against the law or not, is because their life would be over if I couldn't, if I didn't say yes. I'm sorry, we have our rules. This is where you can stay, and the people in that neighborhood want it that way. They're, they bought houses, they paid money, they want their neighborhood protected, and we are the last resort to protect it for them. And yeah, I'm in favor of this. I think we have to have a moratorium until the dust settles on this ordinance that we're about to pass, or we did pass, and see what happens, and then we can get back to this and see what needs adjustment.
Any more questions from Ms. Blankenship? Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
It's no coincidence that the majority of the B&amp;Bs were at the number that they were in 2008, and we went into one of the biggest recessions this country's ever seen. And that definitely impacts tourism, and it definitely impacted, and I think it's a primary cause for the reduction of B&amp;Bs in R1. What is occurring is a new influx into northwest Arkansas. Northwest Arkansas was just listed last week as the number three place in the United States for job creation. And what with all that's occurring in the Bentonville area and Crystal Bridges, and what with all the big corporate offices here, property's moving like gangbusters, and the pressure's going to build once again, and if we don't do something, particularly in R1, I'm not saying R2 or R3, there's still the potential for people, if they want to invest in B&amp;Bs, that they can do, and this is just a moratorium until we understand where we are and where we're going with this community. But if we don't do something proactive, we're going to be chasing our tail again like we did. You saw how difficult it was to regulate this weekly rental property. It was going on for well over a year. So I feel that our, the densest residential neighborhoods are R1, and we need to make an effort to protect it, and that is why we should be entertaining this moratorium. It's not a permanent moratorium, and we'll let planning do their thing. We'll see how that goes, and, you know, maybe 90 days, 180 days, however many days we want this moratorium to be in effect. It'll give us time to assess where we want to go as a community, but I don't want to go through this again, where there's going to be a land rush of people trying to get their foot in the door, because we saw how it happened in the past, and it's not going to be any different with this one.
Mr. Snyder.
Okay, just to make it clear, I don't have a problem at this point with the moratorium in R1. Your thing about this upcoming one, I believe, because it's already active, regardless of what we do, it would not be interfered with. Okay, my question, though, is, what about the people who desperately want to buy a Victorian home and can't afford it unless they could do like a B&amp;B in one section? I mean, that's the way I look at people having a B&amp;B, they're in Victorian, the ones in Victorian homes, anyway. I keep hearing the same thing over and over. We wanted a Victorian so bad, but the only way we could afford to make the payments was to do a B&amp;B in it. Even if we only do it for five or 10 years, you know, that would help with the payments. But I mean, you know, that, I just have a problem saying, "Too bad."
Mr. Mitchell.
I want a, of the, I want a penthouse in New York City, and I can't afford it. So, you know, gee.
Lady, please go.
Of the, of the 20 or 25 B&amp;Bs in the area, over 20 of them are for sale. They won't have any trouble buying a B&amp;B in an old Victorian house. So I guess, I'm serious, that there's, if you want a B&amp;B, you've got a huge range of them, from pricing anywhere from 400,000 up to a million, so no problem.
Mr. DeVito, you have a motion?
Yes, I'd move to have the city attorney, can we do it on a voice or do you need to pin a ordinance?
It would be better to pin an ordinance, or a resolution, actually, but you can do it by a voice vote if you want. You do probably need to decide whether you want to include stopping action on the one that's in process, which you could do, but probably might land you before a judge.
I would make a motion to call for a 90-day moratorium on all CUPs in R1 excluding pending applications.
I'll second that as a...
Is it a resolution?
Well, effective immediately. A resolution, correct.
Got a motion and a second? Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, can we have discussion now?
Yes.
We've got a second here.
Second.
Yeah, we already have a second. Go ahead.
I agree with the moratorium. The 90 days, I would have, I would have much preferred six months, 180 days.
But you can extend it.
We can extend it, okay.
This is, for James, did you say resolution or just a voice vote?
Resolution. Well, I mean...
I'd rather, I'd prefer both, a voice vote.
I'll rescind my motion and just...
Wait, make another one.
Actually, you can use the word "resolution" without it having to be...
I'll stand.
...a written document.
Okay. If you're okay with it, where it's effective immediately tonight, the vote's taken.
If you run into a problem, you're going to know, because they're going to make an application, and then you're good.
Okay.
Mr. Snyder.
When you said the pending applications, did you want to make that pending as of '07, '08, '13?
Well, it'd be pending as of our vote, which would in effect create the moratorium. So if there's pending applications prior to right now, they would pass, they'd get a pass on that.
Anything else? Okay. Resolution is for 60 days or 90 days?
90 days.
Okay. For a 90-day...
A 90-day moratorium, effective immediately for CUPs in R1, with the exception of those applications that are pending.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Better if you take a roll call, actually.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I think you just threw that one in.
It'd still be better if we end up in court.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
5-0.
Okay, takes us out of new business, moves us into agenda setting. In your packets, okay, motion to discuss first.
Submove.
Just a second.
Second.
In your packets, you have a complete copy of the plans, the architectural plans from Mr. Berry on the proposed North Main free parking lot restroom. He has not stamped it yet, so it is nonofficial document, is for reference only. I'd like to put this on the next agenda for discussion, so we can move forward with it, so we can start putting out bids.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. DeVito, do you have anything on agenda? Mr. McClung?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Is this comments or...
Agenda.
Nothing.
Mr. Perkow is out. Ms. Snyder?
No.
Ms. Eller?
No.
Council comments, Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to thank council for their votes tonight. I think we did some pretty good things, and I'm proud of council.
Mr. McClung?
No comments.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'd like to thank all the various entities that have started cleaning up the weeds on Spring Street and cleaning up weeds under the balconies and in different areas in the city. The attention that's being given to making our city for our residents and our guests look better than it was looking for a while, and the attention, just by focusing attention on that issue, there has been some action taken, and it would still be nice for the civic organizations to consider a joint effort that is ongoing, where that there is no extra duplication of services, but they're all working together towards the goal of beautification of the city and/or other aspects of it to make it a pleasant experience.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Snyder?
Just like to thank everybody for having a safe, fun, eventful July 4th, although I tore my knee up again and didn't get to do the parade, which if we'd been in a truck, all of you guys, I could have, but thank you. It was awesome. I just didn't get to see it personally, but thank you for everybody coming out.
Ms. Eller?
No, I don't have any comment.
I have no comments. Most adjourned.
Submove.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.